I was going to thank the chair of the committee for everybody who is interested in letting their names stand for director, if you could please contact me. The strategic planning session for the chamber has been set for January the 28th. And an e-blast will be sent out and communication will be sent out to all their members to ask for recommendations. And there's going to be a junior dragons den in Grand Forks. So they're looking for interested people to act as mentors for participants. Kathy Wright, the executive director for the chamber will be sending out information to their members on that. And regarding the regional tourism advisory committee, as I mentioned this morning, in the committee of the whole. We, there was a tourism meeting workshop at Community Futures about five weeks ago. At Community Futures with TODA, Thompson Economic Tourism. And we decided at that time that we'd like to form a regional advisory committee with representatives from across the board. And so since we haven't heard anything to date regarding that and nobody has been contacted. The, the, the chamber is going to take the lead and initiate the initial meeting to strike up this committee. And then we'll decide how it's going to go from there. So the motion was passed to develop a task force to form a regional tourism advisory committee. Bringing all of the stakeholders together, chamber's commitment is limited to initiating the initial meeting only at this time. A motion was passed and to look at revising the vision and mission statement to include tourism for the chamber. And that was passed. So when that was done, thank you.
So we have a question on the table, reports, Councilor Seaton.
Discussion?
Go ahead, Councilor Butler.
In my report, I just had one question this week, and that was a question of staff to discover how much has been spent in 2015 on legal expenses. And specifically to Young Anderson and for a breakdown of those expenses. One of the reasons why I asked this question is since the city is embarking on asset management and wishing to save $300,000 by cutting union positions. I would like to know if we're also being as diligent in other areas such as legal fees. And since our bylaw 1946, 2013 permits council members to ask questions on matters pertaining to city operations. I would appreciate a response from staff probably in writing on this to get a breakdown of the legal expenses.
So noted.
In respect to that, the, the information that comes over in that will be consolidated at the end of the year. So once we have all of that data, because we're still dealing with legal proceedings or we still, the invoices coming in in relation to such as the Supreme Court and things like that. So, so as we're moving through these proceedings, our consolidated statements of information, financial information will be provided annually as it does every year. So at that time, we'll have all of that accurate detail. What we could do in the budget process is break down the allocations of where some things are spent. But some of that stuff is client privileged information. So there may be some areas where it would not be prudent for it to be made public because of some of the parties involved. So, so that information can be brought forward. We'll, we'll talk, we'll break that down if we, our report comes forward in January. Thank you.
Just a follow-up question to that, Mr. Mayor, three years to the CIO. Truly, council members should be privileged to know how taxpayers' dollars are being spent on legal expenses. And considering we have a communications policy that's quite extensive on the agenda tonight and transparency is an issue. I feel it would be appropriate for this type of information to be forthcoming, not only to council, but also to the taxpayers and the public and how their dollars are being spent. In a timely manner, they'll have to wait until the end of the year to find these things out.
Mr. Mayor, like I said, in respect to that, we still have bills coming in. When it comes down to the information related to client privilege and confidentiality, if that was to, to be made public in some of those, in that respect, it could compromise. The relationship between yourself and your lawyer. So once you make that available, you do, you do break that. There are, there's, in my opinion, there's really nothing that's significant. I think the, the process is, is fair to have it brought forward. Like I said, it would be brought forward. Generally, legal stuff is discussed at in-camera meetings. If the, if council wants to release that from in-camera, that would be a resolution of council, not what you discuss through council at a, an open meeting. But then again, Mr. Mayor, that does, goes against what's identified by community charter under section 90. So again, that's the prerogative of council.
Councilor Butler.
And I would ask Mr. Mayor that this be brought forward at an in-camera meeting so that council at least can be privy to the information. And the information isn't just held with staff, but the people's representatives actually have the opportunity to do this in-camera. Thank you.
Does Mr. Mayor, can that be a resolution that we can, if seconded and then have a draw? Bring that forward as a motion.
I therefore bring forward a motion that staff release to council the information pertaining to legal expenses in 2015 in a written report with a detailed breakdown of those expenses.
Do I have a second, then? Councilor Ross, all in favor of that motion? So carried. Now getting back to the other question that's still on the table to receive the written reports from council. All in favor? So carried. The next item on the agenda is the verbal report from the RDKB rep, which is myself. I attended my first RDKB meeting on December 1st. It was around the regional district boundary economic development. Not much transpired at that particular meeting to really report on. Other than the fact that certain economic development issues, collaboration between the community, and no real value. On Thursday, December the 10th, I attended my second one in Trail, and that was the inauguration of myself. And then we had the election of chair and vice chair. The chair was Grace McGregor and the vice chair was Rowley Russell. And there was also discussion around the committee of the whole meeting by the RDKB and also the board of directors meeting dates. And that basically was a very short meeting, and all I have in my report.
Further motions received, sir?
Thank you. I have a second. All in favor? So carried. Now we have recommendations from staff for decisions. The first item is our communications policies and procedures. And our deputy corporate officer can write on that if she wishes, or... No. Councilor Butler.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would put forward a resolution that council adopts the communications policy and procedures as presented by the deputy corporate officer of communications.
Do I have a second? Second. Councilor Butler.
We have discussed this in length, that this morning's meeting for anybody interested in seeing that, I won't repeat myself again this evening, but I encourage you to view the committee of the whole meeting this morning. Just in short, I find that this communications policy is very long and wordy and broadly interpreted. Since it's about communications, I think it would be better if it was clearly and more succinctly written. There's also verbiage in here that seems to remove freedom of speech from counselors with regards to media relations, and I wouldn't be in support of that. There's nothing in here that addresses FOI requests that I remember seeing, and we do have a lot of FOIs coming into the city as citizens are having a hard time receiving that information from a written request. They're having to go through the Freedom of Information Avenue, which is extremely lengthy and sometimes not forthcoming with information. And I don't find that to be overly transparent, so I will be speaking against this motion.
Is there any other discussions? Small in favor of questions? All opposed? Councilor Butler? So carried. Under the information items, subject matter is the notice of annual general meeting and first call for resolutions of 2016. Recommendation is council receives for information and notes the first call for resolutions for 2016 AKBLG annual general meeting. Councilor Butler. Councilor Hemmott? This question.
Just for council and public information, I find it urgent to bring forward a resolution regarding the elimination of the annual tax sale. And using the same process as the surveyor of taxes. I prepared a resolution in 2011 regarding this issue. That was adopted both by the AKBLG and subsequently the UBCM, but more information was requested. Inasmuch as I was not on council the next term, nothing more was done in this regard. I intend to work on this issue with the CFO in the new year and will be bringing a report and a proposed resolution for council's consideration prior to the AKBLG deadline.
Councilor Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to begin a discussion. I think it's really important that the city of Grand Forks bring forth resolutions to the AKBLG. And it's more effective if we work collaboratively with our surrounding regions just to give our resolutions a little bit more strength. So it's just not coming from the city. So I would like to ask the council to indulge me in working with potentially Area D and some of the other regions. BC Timber Sales has applied to continue to clearcut up the North Fork, up the Lynch. And with over 1,000 hectares of new clearcutting that will take them right along the boundary of Gladstone Park. There'll be several more kilometers of forest service roads or resource roads that will run through that area, which is quite a large impact on the Kettle River Grizzly that do live up there. And I saw one of those this summer. So it'll take us right up to Cannon Creek area of Lynch Creek North. So I would like, after speaking to our member of parliament today, Richard Canning, who is an ecologist and a biologist. And seeing that we, that federal government really seems not to have much jurisdiction over what the provincial government does. I would like to see us somehow enter into discussion with the province as municipalities into how we can, as a community, manage our surrounding forests. Because it does impact our climate and impacts our water. So I am going to, with the permission of council and support of council, begin to work with some of the experts that I know, working with BC Timber Sales, who are, have been working on this for a long time. To draft a, a solid resolution that may be considered by the AKBLG and be supported in, and have the area, at least Area D, hopefully support the resolution as well. So it goes forward onto the floor, not just from the city of Grand Forks, but from our surrounding, our surrounding municipalities.
Any other discussion? Councilor Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also had a motion that I'd like to bring forward to the AKBLG. After speaking with our CIO about issues regarding water in the city, and I'm sure everyone here knows that's something that I feel passionately about and have spoken about many times. That I am concerned about the privatization of aquifers, infrastructure and water within our province. The CIO said to me that although I keep bringing it forward to council, it's something that's more appropriate for the AKBLG or the UBCM. So on his recommendation, I've drafted up a motion, which is just a draft. I've sent it out to all of council on your first class, so if you wanted to open it, it is in your email. And it just states, whereas the privatization of water resources is becoming commonplace worldwide. And whereas privatization can lead to decreased access for the public, increased prices and decreased product and quality of service. Therefore, let it be resolved that the city of Grand Forks urges the provincial government to take steps to protect the aquifers and public infrastructure from the purchase by private or corporate interests.
Do I have a second there on that? Is that a motion you're putting forward?
No, no, no.
Just bring permission to...
It's a notice of motion. I'm just bringing it forward at this time for council's consideration, and I've emailed it out to them and would be open to feedback on wording or content.
This is very similar to what's already in our strategic plan?
Yes, it does. It aligns with the strategic plan for Grand Forks.
Are you subject to question on the table? All in favor to receive the information? So carried. Moving on to our next information item, it's the, in regards to the letter of thank you and appreciation to Chief Dale Ariat and firefighter Jen Dorner. For their invaluable assistance during the recent fire investigation at Christina Lake. They have a motion to receive the letter from the Christina Lake Fire Department for information. Councilor Hemmott, Councilor Butler. All in favor? So carried. Our next item is the letter regarding the gas tax agreement, community works fund payment for the fiscal year of 2015-16. That represents $106,709.50. And they may have a motion to receive this letter from the UBCM for information purposes. Councilor Thompson, Councilor Hemmott? Discussion, Councilor Butler?
Just for public info, this is, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, a payment that we receive bi-annually that comes from the UBCM. And it's nothing new. It's something we receive every year, so it's appreciated and just want to say that.
All in favor of the question? So carried. Our next items are the bylaws. Where manager of development and engineering services, subject matter to amend the current zoning bylaw by rezoning property located at 6401 Highway 3. From the current TC tourist commercial zone to HC highway commercial zone. Shall we have our manager of development and engineering speak on the subject? It's Chiefs.
Hello? So Mr. Stany put in an application to rezone the property. You know, the address is on the east side of town, beside the Victorian Hotel, that area. And so he wanted to rezone the property so that he could deploy use out of it. So the property is bounded on one side by tourist commercial and on the other side by highway commercial. So he's kind of right on the boundary there. Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm well on the right of the motion.
Okay, sorry. So what I would like me to explain is that once we get the first two readings of the bylaw, then it triggers a public hearing process. And then we will have the public hearing in January and go on from there.
Thank you. Councilor Croft, would you like to make a motion, please? Give the first and second readings to the city of Grand Forks zoning amendment by law 1606 A4215 and proceed with the statutory requirements for amending the bylaws in the local government act. Do I have a second, then? Councilor Thompson, please. Discussion, Councilor Butler and then Councilor Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember the first time this was brought up, the only concern seemed to be that the property was on a septic and there was going to be possibilities of car washes and restaurants or different things in that area. And I just wanted more information on the environmental impact versus would there be studies that would have to be done before certain things were built? Details on that.
Your CIO, Mr. Earl.
So, Mr. Mayor, when the, when the bylaw goes between the third and fourth radius, it goes to the Ministry of Transportation as well. At that, at that time, they'll have to provide to improve out all of their engineering requirements, should they be making any changes. If they are actually planning on making any changes that are going to affect environmental, again, being close to the riparian area in this region right here. They would be subject to regulations under the Water Act. And further, the, the ministry will require some transportation information. And should they be wanting to do anything else related to the activities that are being proposed, it will require a full consummate report. So at that point in time, it'll come back into us to be reviewed and potentially sent off to our, our consultants for review from an engineering perspective. So everything would have to comply to engineering standards and have to be designed by a professional engineer, not just simply at their pleasure. It would have to meet all of the regulatory requirements. So just to give council that assurance that while they're working in around this area here, they are subject to the Water Act, which fine start at a quarter of a million dollars for our infractions. And then with this area here, it is controlled by the, by the, the process for referrals of the Ministry of Transportation. So all of that will be regulated. Councilor Ross.
Well, the last time I checked, God wasn't making any more riverfront properties. And, you know, I've been to a lot of places, I know many of us have, where towns and cities have made decisions about how they, they develop their waterfront properties. And then later on, they regret it, and it's really hard to jackhammer a asphalt. I won't be supporting this resolution. I know we need economic development, but according to this application in writing, in handwriting, restaurants, automobile sales and part supply, service stations, convenience stores, including gas bars, underlying gas bars, car wash establishments and retail sales. You know, it's not that we may not need another gas station in town. I don't really think so, but I don't think it belongs there. And I think we can do better than that. It's, it's the, it's the, maybe the right business in the wrong place. And therefore I am not going to support having this kind of establishment, which sounds like it's going to be a lot of contaminants and in a place right on our river. So I will not be supporting this resolution, this motion.
Councilor Hemmott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property is already being used, unfortunately, we don't own this property, it's privately owned, so we can't dictate who's been on the zone. But already there is a used car sales lot there and what used to be, there's, there's a car wash, there's a detailing shop there. So it's already being used for that purpose. So it sounds to me like it's going to look a lot better because it's going to be built into a proper gas station, convenience store. In a location that is already paved, that's already automotive. It's right beside Coopie Car Care and, I mean, it's private property. It's already there.
Councilor Thompson.
That property unit's original form was a gas station. So it's, this just went back to its original use.
Councilor Ross.
So I'm assuming there are tanks already under the ground? I mean, when's the last time those tanks had checked? Are they going to put new tanks in? Are we dealing with contaminated site already? You know, I, and I think it is, it's, it's also taking business out of the downtown core again. So we're creating a drive-through community where people are going to stop there, go to the convenience store, fill up their car and just drive on through. So instead of settle down, it's drive on through again. I think we need to keep things in the downtown core. And I realize that it's something that's been previously used without purpose, but I think we're just encouraging something that really isn't part of our sustainability plan. Although they have mentioned the, the SCP here in their application, it's their support of how this development is part of our, our SCP. it's their support of how this development is part of our SCP is very weak. I would have liked to see something, I would have liked to see something that was stronger, that support our SCP, and I think it's extremely weak.
Let's speak briefly on one subject. As far as the contamination factor, that's still going to be coming with the provincial jurisdiction that we have to comply with. There's no danger of that before they can operate, they will have to have that check. And to our CEO further.
Mr. Mayor, it's considered to be as a nonconforming use. So in our zoning bylaw, we have different uses that are happening in our community. This has been going on for many years. And what we're doing now is adapting the use based on what it's being used for. It's currently being used for this purpose. And it doesn't meet our zoning bylaw. So we have a nonconforming use within our zoning bylaw. The options for council at that point would be, you know, to go back in time to see when this was approved and how long they've been using it for this. Our bylaw, our zoning bylaw was last done in 1999. So I don't know how long this has been happening, but I can tell you that when Ms. Bird brought this forward, it was to address a nonconforming issue. We're going to see a lot of these when we bring forward the zoning bylaw for amendment in the future or for, basically for reconsideration by council. Because we have a lot of these happening in our community where there are nonconforming uses under the current zoning bylaw. So again, council will be aware that they'll see many of these things coming forward. I think their manager said that there was at least 20 of these within our community. So these would be businesses that have established themselves and that are not conforming to the lab use.
So this rezoning is not an extraordinary issue because the properties around them are already in this zoning or they're in on?
Yes, well, there's, this is the uses. So this would conform to the SCP. But again, to what Counselor Lawson's talking about is there would be many investigative pieces that would have to be discovered that would be incumbent upon the owner to undertake prior to them transforming, like for instance, an underground tank. They would have to ensure that that was addressed prior to any further activity. And if it was found to be contaminated, happens is they measure the contamination and then they seek out how far that contamination's gone. And then it's incumbent upon the landowner then to incorporate those costs for remediation. So if they find contamination, which could be beneficial to us now because if there was contamination, they would actually have to start to clean this stuff up and move it out of town. And this process would actually be triggered should they make application for a development permit in this area. So there are things that can trigger it positively. There are things that can be negative about this. But again, as before, council, for the first two readings for it to be considered, to trigger public hearing.
And there are still the statutory requirements for amendment. Absolutely. So the question is on the table, all in favor? All opposed, Counselor Lawson. Motion is carried. Moving on to our Chief Financial Officer. Subject matter, bylaw 2019, the City of Grand Forks 2016 Revenue Anticipation Borrowing Bylaw. The recommendation is that council gives the first three readings of the bylaw. Number 219, City of Grand Forks Revenue Anticipation Borrowing Bylaw, 2016. Counselor Thompson. Do I have a second, Counselor Butler? Any other questions? All in favor, so carried. To our Manager of Operations. Subject matter, Water Regulation Bylaw, number 1973-81. Recommendation is that council gives the third reading of the Water Regulation Bylaw, number 1973-81. Do I have a move on?
One second.
Counselor Thompson. Do I have a second there? Counselor Hemmott. Any discussion? Counselor Thompson.
Thank you. Worship through you to the Manager of Operations. Just a point of clarification. On the user rates, it's effective July 1st, 2014. I'm assuming that would have to change to 2016. And are the rates highlighted in red, are those the proposed rates?
Through the mayor, the rates that are highlighted in red are from bylaw 2014, which is currently in place right now. So it's just consolidating bylaw 2014 with 1973-81.
Thank you. I'm acting there right now, so I'll let myself speak. Did you recognize yourself? Yeah. Discussion, yeah. You know, obviously, I can't support this bylaw because it includes water meters. We all know that. But there's also another new clause that's been added in here that someone's water can be shut off with 30 days' notice, which was never in here before. And I can't support shutting off someone's water with 30 days' notice. I think water's a human right and there's other ways to remediate such a situation.
Any other discussion? So there's a question on the table, all in favor? All opposed, Counselor Butler. Motion is carried. May I call a brief recess for five minutes, please? Ladies and gentlemen. Late item on the agenda is more of an information item. And it pertains, as I've mentioned earlier, regarding the Deer Committee. Council has unanimously approved to dissolve the current Deer Committee. And further, the city operationalizes the referendum question as per wishes of the majority vote of the electorate at the 2014 government election. This resolution was pulled out of in camera, which was done today. I will now move on to questions from the public and the media. May I caution everyone that the questions must pertain to tonight's subject matter on the agenda. Any deviations from such will not be addressed. Counselor Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As my report tonight was related to issues surrounding legal expenses and union layoffs, I would encourage that that is on the agenda tonight.
There's a gentleman in the front row.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Harry Naught. I'm a national representative for Canadian Union of Public Employees. And tonight, I'm representing your employees and mayor's. With your permission, I was part of the edit, placing the letter before you that you got today and also part of the media release that came out today. And with the mayor's and council's permission, I'd like to speak to you. Are we?
The mayor's not encompassing into the collective bargaining agreement?
Oh, certainly not. Nope. I know my, and thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. I guess what I'm here to do is plead to people to not lay off your citizens, your employees. Do not do this. This is not necessary. With all due respect, I participated in the Section 54 discussions and I left there very optimistic. I assisted my colleague, Sheena Murdock, in there. I assisted her in that process and we left very optimistic, very optimistic that we would have a deal. And I can tell you that from being somewhat removed from, I was almost blindsided when I heard what was happening. Your employees, the citizens of this town, want to support you to find a $300,000 savings. We want that to happen. They clearly want it to happen. We want to negotiate. We want to sit down and talk like we did the day that we did this. We want to. We have some excellent ideas that can happen. I'm shocked that you haven't heard this. These, under QB, we have what's called local autonomy. These, your employees, these members decide if we go forward or not. They're telling us we don't want, they don't want to go forward with legal costs. There will be significant legal costs associated to this.
I just think that as we start dealing with that, that's in camera. So we start talking about legal, we'll have to have that discussion in camera because it goes with legal. So, I mean, the conversation, don't you move it.
Is that legal?
Then, once that happens, we have to deal with the lawyer because we cannot have that, because that would be considered to be a, basically, a threat of legal action to the city. So then, then we would have to incur that, the discussion with our lawyer at that point. So I just recommend that we don't go with having the discussion around the legal business.
Okay, fine, Mr. Mayor. It's not a threat. We have a legal obligation under the Labor Relations Code to represent our members. So if the 54 discussions did not take place in earnest, if you did not clearly hear and consider our options, we have the right to file and complete with the board. We must do this. We can save you $300,000 without laying off your employees, without laying off your citizens. We don't want to cost, have large costs. We don't want that. We want nothing to do with that. I've been a QP national rep for 10 years. And I would challenge you to contact the City of Kelowna, the City of Salmonon, countless cities, the City of Nelson. They will tell you, we, I, as a national rep, I am forthright, I am honest, and I am upfront. I will support employers. That's our job. These people want to support you as mayor and council. You need to reconsider this. You need to talk. I'm available tomorrow morning to talk. I'll meet with you. I encourage council to participate in these discussions. Hear what we're talking about and consider it. You do not need to lay off these employees. You do not need to do that. We can help with this. And I strongly encourage you to read the letter and work with us. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Seems like it's more than just three or four people down at Public Works that are concerned with this issue. It seems like we have a lot of our workers here tonight that are pulling together on this. I think council, I know myself, I feel very trepidatious about speaking with anyone in the union because I don't want to compromise the collective bargaining agreement. I don't want to do anything that would put the city in jeopardy. Although, on the other hand, I would love to speak to our Public Works employees and I just don't feel legally, I know my rights to be able to do that. So I think that maybe needs to be cleared up somehow. I mean, we're only supposed to go through our CIO to deal with this issue and I don't want to overstep my bounds as a counselor to go outside that jurisdiction. So if you could show me how I can do that in a respectful way and not step outside of my role as a counselor, I would be happy to speak with you.
Do we have any other questions from the gallery? Gentlemen in the first row.
Mr. Mayor, Phil Moore, citizen, taxpayer. I was quite elated to hear all the talk about transparency that the council is now proceeding with. And, but I was wondering why we have so many Section 90 meetings and covering all the items that are permitted under Section 90, where only a very few are mandatory to be under Section 90 and the others are at council's discretion. They don't have to be. So why is everything that may be also is being used in Section 90 rather than a public meeting? Thank you.
That question is, to a degree, not a simple one, but the response is as follows. Due to sensitivity of certain issues, they were first put in camera. But once it's realized that it's not necessary to have them in camera, we do release them as we did one already this evening. So they're not all kept in camera. But if they do fall under Section 90 and we feel it's pertinent, then the city will do so. But anything that is relevant to the public will be released. So there is our transparency, the best that we are able to do.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? A gentleman or a lady in the second row, my apologies.
I didn't quite hear the Deer Committee information. You dissolved the Deer Committee and what was happening regarding the college?
Could you please identify yourself?
Sorry, my name is Lori Graham, citizen of South Fork.
Yes, the resolution was that we dissolve the current Deer Committee and further that the city operationalizes the referendum question as per the wishes of the majority vote of the electorate at the 2014 government election.
What does operationalize mean? Is that you're going ahead with it? I don't quite understand. Yes?
Yes, we are going forward to respect the citizens' wishes as per the referendum, i.e. Let me set it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? In this case, may I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Crawford, all in favor? So carried. This meeting is adjourned.